Roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler.
Present.
Counselor Gerson.
Good.
Counselor Trask. Counselor Gorley. Counselor Coleman.
Present.
Counselor Sanchez.
Here.
Counselor Richards.
Let the record show, we have five present with two absent. Counselor Richards is sick and, and Lisa Counselor Worley is occupied this evening. So that said, so we want to make a motion for approval of absence.
I move to approve.
I'll say. Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Trask. Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Do we have to recognize that Counsel Sanchez showed up? That need to be on the record?
I did record it in the minutes. But if we wanted to make a motion about the absence of Mayor Mahler for that meeting, we should.
We should do that.
So moved.
I'll second. And Counselor Gorley, right.
There's a motion second by roll call on the absence of the work session.
I'm sorry, who seconded that? Counselor Gerson. Thank you. Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
The record show five eyes, no, no eight of two absent approval of the absence of the session, counsel Mahler and Worley. At this time, would you please do the live stream instructions?
Thank you to everyone who is joining us this evening. For members of the public who would like to take part in tonight's meeting virtually, we have some instructions to help you in case you are new to using Microsoft Teams. To take part, you will need to locate the chat bubble icon to participate in the meeting online. The chat bubble icon indicated with the yellow arrow on your screen now may be in the upper right-hand corner of your screen, or you may need to click on the three dots to see an extended dropdown menu. If you wish to be recognized by the mayor to speak during the meeting, please choose the bubble icon to enter the meeting chat. It will appear on the right-hand side of your screen. In the chat, enter your name, address, and phone number, followed by the topic you wish to discuss with the council. If you have signed in, you may be called on to speak at any point during the meeting, but probably during the agenda item you have entered to speak about. You can choose the hand icon, also located in the upper right-hand corner, to indicate your desire to speak. It's the equivalent of raising your hand. The mayor, acting chairperson, or moderator will ask you to speak at the appropriate time. We'll give everyone who may wish to speak tonight a few minutes right now to enter their name, address, phone number, and topic they'd like to address with the council. In the interest of time, speakers should not repeat the points of a previous speaker. Instead, state you agree with their point or disagree with their point. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Any extension of that time is at the sole discretion of the mayor or meeting chairperson per council rules. Those joining by phone will be noted by the moderator for the mayor, chairperson, and called to speak at the appropriate time. The fact the meeting on, the fact the meeting is online does not excuse poor behavior, and the mayor does retain the right to have people removed from the meeting as stated in the council rules.
Thanks, Julie. This time, consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Trask. Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Record show that five eyes, no eight of two absent approval of the consent agenda. At this time, we have sworn in of a new officer this evening. Good knowledge.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you very much for this opportunity. As you know, we've been working really diligently to replenish our ranks that we've lost for the last few years. And so it's my honor to introduce our newest police officer, Alan, Alan Cright. Alan, come on up. Alan comes to us from Michigan via Florida. He grew up in, in both places. Florida was the last place he was at when he finished high school and played a little college baseball in Florida for a bit. So we're ready for the softball tournament again with fire department. And so, but during that time, right after he was in college, he decided to join the United States Marine Corps where he served. And while in the Marine Corps, yes, he was able to meet his wife Emily, who's back in the corner in Japan where they were stationed. And so the nice thing you can see, and they had two beautiful kids with them. And they actually moved to Sweet Home recently to be closer to some of Emily's family that's in, in the area. So with that, we are extremely excited to have Alan on our, our staff. As we've mentioned before, we really look for the, the character of the person. And then hopefully we can make them into police officers, which I'm sure we, we absolutely can in, in this case. So I think you'll fit in fantastic with our department and our culture and our, our values of our community. So with that, I'm going to ask that city manager of Worcester swears Alan in. What we'll do is probably same as last time. Would you, you want to face in this direction? Is that, okay, we'll face this direction. Pretty simple, you're gonna read pretty long, haven't failed you, so.
Alan, welcome to the city of Sweet Home. We're so glad you're here and it's so nice to be here as lovely family. We're glad that you're part of our department. You should be honored to be selected for this position. You have a great group of leaders in the department that are going to be mentoring you as you fulfill your career here. And we hope that you have a longstanding career in the city of Sweet Home. So if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. Can I say your name?
I, Alan Cright.
Please.
That I was supporting the constitution of the United States of America.
The constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
Laws and ordinances of the city of Sweet Home.
The laws and ordinance of the city of Sweet Home.
And the rules and regulations of the Sweet Home Police Department.
And the rules and regulations of the Sweet Home Police Department.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of, to the office to which I have been appointed.
And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office to which I have been appointed.
In and for the city of Sweet Home.
In and for the city of Sweet Home.
According to the law and to the best of my abilities.
According to the law and to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Bring the family out.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Hello, Officer Cright, welcome to the department on behalf of the city and welcome your family to our community.
Thank you.
So I do have a question. What position did you play? I thought so.
Well, at least he wasn't a batter. Yeah, we'll see how he does at the fire department.
We had a few bad years.
Not anymore.
They brought in a bunch of other people to play because they can't. I've seen you play that and all fully.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, let me go to recognition of visitors of hearing and petitions. Anybody who might come forth before the council that you heard. Okay. We'll go on to old business. Public hearing, resolution number fifteen of twenty twenty-two. At this time, I'm going to be turning this over to my pro temp council person because of the conflict and bias to this situation. At this time, I'll turn it over to you.
So this is the public hearing for resolution number fifteen for twenty twenty-two, a resolution naming the Sweet Home wastewater treatment plant to the Mahler Water Reclamation Facility and acknowledging the dedicated public servants who run the facility. So we need a declaration by the members, oh, so I'm going to open the public hearing and a declaration by the members of council as to bias.
None.
I have to abstain. I do have bias to answer on what.
None.
None.
Conflict of interest?
None.
None?
None.
And excommunication?
None.
None?
None.
Okay. So staff report.
It's my pleasure this evening to present to you a resolution proposing a name that we rename or name the new wastewater facility to the Mahler family water reclamation facility. And in two thousand sixteen, the city underwent a process of developing a naming criteria for our public facilities. And we have met all of the criteria outlined in that resolution. Our public works director, Greg Springman, and his team submitted the proposal in honor of the Mahler family and the work that they have done for our community over several years, both in service to the city and to the fire district. And the resolution before you tonight is in honor of not only the Mahler family, but, and also recognition of the men and women that serve in the utilities department and are responsible for the day-to-day operations of this facility. It is a very technical position. We're really proud of them and we're asking for your approval of the resolution that's in the packet tonight on page nineteen.
Thank you. So the floor is open for public comment. Those who testify must be recognized by the pro temp, be on microphone, and state their full name and address for the record. No one shall be disorderly, disruptive, or abusive during the hearing. The testimony must be relevant and redundancy or repetition is to be avoided.
President Pro Temp Gerson, would you like to open the floor for any public comment?
I beg your pardon?
Would you like to open the floor for public comment?
If I did, didn't I? I said the floor is opened.
Okay, I, I just missed that, I guess.
So if there's no comment?
There's no one online that wishes to comment.
Then I close the public hearing. Is there a further discussion by the council? Decision of the council.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the application and resolution number fifteen for twenty twenty-two to name the wastewater treatment facility to the Mahler Water Reclamation Facility.
So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Julie, roll call, please.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
President Pro Temp Gerson.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler abstaining. Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
So let the record show there are four eyes, one abstention, and two absent.
On behalf of my family. RCA ODOT Art in the public right-of-way agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a little bit of a misnomer because there's actually, the art is not technically in the public right-of-way. It's on an ODOT building, but this is the way they handle those things. The city previously had a IGA with ODOT for artwork in the public right-of-way that was centered on the, the intersection of two twenty-eight and Highway twenty adjacent to the Eastland Museum. Since that, that has since expired and also through some staff efforts, the, the property that ODOT owns on that corner has been transferred to the Eastland Museum. And there's only a, a strip of grassy area now. And so an agreement with ODOT for that artwork is no longer necessary. But that still leaves the mural that is on the ODOT building to be governed by this agreement as well as a remaining grassy strip there on the corner of two twenty-eight and Highway twenty. And that essentially is just mowing of that, caring for the landscaping of that little strip, which is done at the same time as adjoining property that is now owned by the Eastland Museum. And so this, this IGA before you is what ODOT has submitted, proposed for this agreement essentially ensures that the mural would continue to be present on the ODOT building, but that the maintenance would be, and any required work on that mural would be up to the city. And then likewise, that the city would ensure that the grassy area there adjacent to the artwork at the corner of two twenty-eight, Highway twenty would also be taken care of. So the history is in the RCA before you. We've talked about this item before, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Oh, there, there, before you, there is a copy that is an amended, amended version of the IGA that I just received today. And in that one, I believe on page six or seven, there's a highlighted portion that shows what was added. And essentially is a basically a procedure for the city to terminate the agreement if ODOT doesn't hold up to their side of the bargain.
I have blank pages.
We, we discussed this, just so you know that I don't think it probably nine in nine to one it would ever be a problem. But there's no exit by the city on this that we've, that I've seen. Maybe missed it, but I, I haven't seen it and Blair and I have gone over it. There's no exit on it, the city. Once you sign it to forever contract.
There's an exit if ODOT agree, if, if both parties agree, there's an exit.
Correct, but there's no, like in a lot of them, there's no, you give us thirty days or ninety days or six months or a year from now notice. And we want to leave the contract. There's, that's not in there. It's even the new part says if the state failed, if the state fails to do something, but it's just, you know, I, I suspect if you're dealing with the state and I suspect if they, if you want out of it, you can probably negotiate with them to get out of it, but there's no, there's no get out clause.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, if I may. So I have a problem with this because I'm concerned about maintaining the mural. It's been there a long time. It's going to need some maintenance. We don't maintain the murals for any other business in town. And we don't have a policy regarding this kind of thing. And we don't have any money in the budget to maintain the mural. And Paul, and if, you know, donations is one thing, but the city normally doesn't go out and seek donation, but that's another issue. For me, this particular agreement doesn't have any obligations from ODOT. Under, under their obligations, there aren't any. But our obligation is to maintain that mural. And I, I recognize the tourist attraction of murals, but we've already had two overpainted in this, in the city. And I, I just have a real problem with this of maintaining a mural on a private building.
Well, it just, just, it would, it is a public building. I mean, it's a state public building, but it's, it's public built.
But it does set a precedent.
Well, it's, it does if you've got another public building. You know, but.
Well, I think, you know, it's a public building. Yeah, it's a public building. I think where she's going out with this is the private sees that and says, well, you did it for them. Why?
I understand, but I, I think you could, if, if that's, if that's an issue, I think that you could delineate it because it is a state public building. It's not a private.
I, I don't have a problem with the mowing of the grass. That's not a problem. I would agree with that part of the agreement.
Definitely agree with the grass.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, if we have an issue with the way that the downtown looks and we don't really have any control over private businesses, we have the opportunity to have some sort of authority on what we do and what we don't do as the gateway, the entryway to our city with that particular spot. I think that it would be in our interest to at least control some of that in some way. Mr. Mayor, if I could, Blair, you, this is an update of a previous IGA that expired in twenty twenty?
Is that what it is? At the end of twenty twenty.
At the end of twenty twenty. And is it exactly the same besides a little less grass?
Essentially, what it was, we, we removed that, the, the the logger statue and, and those things that are adjacent were removed from the agreement because they're no longer an ODOT property.
But the previous IGA covered the mural as well?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. And so far, the state hasn't come after us for any issues with that?
No, it, maintenance is entirely in our realm and, and up to us to schedule and budget as we are able. ODOT has not, to my knowledge, ever asked the city to do anything to it. And so it, yes, there's an obligation to maintain it, but it's not that, it's not like ODOT's coming after us because of a a decrepit mural. It could get to that point, I suppose. But it would take some time.
But would they want us to redo the mural and paint their entire building or?
Well, it's only for that, that side of the building where the mural is. It doesn't, we're not obligated to take care of any other part of their building or any other painting. Just the, it's just the mural part.
I think, Greg, I think.
We were asked last year to put a coating and some specifications were given to us and we applied two different products to that monument. And that's all we were instructed to do.
You're talking about the logger.
The logger.
Yeah, but that's, that's not in this agreement.
So if I could, so they might come back and ask us to put a clear coat, which is mentioned in the IGA on the mural, which would need to be repainted before you put a clear coat on it. So I'm, I'm not too concerned about it because I think to Counselor Sanchez's point, I think it is the entryway. But I didn't even know, I mean, I was unaware that it was our responsibilities to maintain that. I'm a little concerned about the weeds that grow up around the mural that are ODOTs, that we don't have any authority to ask them to pull their weeds. So.
Well, good point. Good point.
And I also don't want to make an enemy of ODOT right now, so.
It may take ten years to get back in.
No, I, I would, I would agree with that. And I, and I agree that we need to make sure that the entrance to our city looks really good. I'm just concerned about the precedent that we might set. And we've set a couple of precedents this, this year. And I think we just need to be careful when we start saying, yes, this is what we're going to use taxpayers' money to do. So, or we're going to go out and seek donations to get it done. So that's, that's just my concern.
Mr. Mayor, do you think it would be beneficial to table this until it can be, a policy could be created regarding murals in our community? Because if two have already been painted over and it is a tourist attraction, I don't know how much of a tourist attraction, but I don't know. But those murals are on private property. So I'm, I'm confused by that whole thing. What, what, what is our bounds there?
So the murals, there were some agreements for some of the murals. Those agreements I've reviewed and they, they don't appear to be effective anymore. They appear to be expired. And it's not clear if, it, it's not clear if any of them were ever recorded with the county when it comes to the, the land itself. And so if there was a change in ownership, it may be that those agreements aren't in effect at all. So the problem with, you know, a mural on private property is it only has as much control as the private property owner is willing to give the city. Usually the cities have been able to participate in things like that when it comes to funding, offering funding for things. The other issue is that the mural agreements were originally done by a mural committee that was part of Shettig. And, and so the city isn't actually even signatory to it. So it, it is kind of a, I'm not sure what control we could exert at this point over any of those, any of the existing murals. The only thing we could do is, is essentially offer private property owners a, a maintenance agreement where, where we commit to, to maintain the mural for them and, and thereby get a commitment from them not to paint over it. It's essentially what we're asking from ODOT is we're committing ODOT to not paint over the mural that's there. And, and we say that we're going to take care of it in order to, to keep it looking nice. We could offer the same thing, I suppose, to private property owners. But again, it depends entirely on whether they are willing to commit themselves to, to not paint over it.
So could a SEEP grant be used for that purpose?
Murals are specifically listed in the SEEP program, so you can use a, a SEEP grant to paint a mural on your property. But it does not include any commitment from the property owner to maintain that mural for any period of time. Or, or it doesn't give the city any control over it. It's strictly for the creation of the mural in the first place.
I can see both Counselor Gerson and Counselor Sanchez's points regarding this. My mural on my building, I redid my, I did it out of my own pocket and it was just around about a thousand dollars to repaint it. Not talking a lot of money either, so. You know, I knew Shettig had the, had the agreement, but they, it was done a long time ago. They're not part of that anymore as far as I know, so, but if SEEP that, I think it's well covered one way or another. It's not a lot of space. At least for what I did.
Mr. Mayor, is that the only one we have to deal with? Because the rest of them are on private.
The, the ODOT mural is the only one that's on, that's on a public building.
ODOT.
Right, although, all the others are all on, on private buildings.
Actually, you're talking about the two twenty-eight and twenty, right? It was actually, ODOT's got two of them, I think.
Two murals?
Mm-hmm. Regardless, but I mean, they, you come in on their maintenance shop on the wall, they've got, they've got on First, they've got a mural there too.
That's not what we're talking about.
No, but we're, we're just talking about, th- this agreement only covers the one that's on, on Main Street.
On the north side. Just clarifying you, somebody was saying there was only, was brought up only one, but there's actually two of.
So that, that ODOT shop on, on First?
That's their own building. That's
Yeah.
That's government building, but I mean, I'm just saying.
I'd have to look into, I, I didn't look into the other, any other properties that it has that have murals on them. So this was the only one that was specified in the agreement.
If they can keep the one and maintain the one on their building, we can maintain the one on the secondary building.
Well, and there's no address on the agreement. I'm just saying.
Any other comment by council? Counsel directive.
I like Counselor Coleman's idea to table this until we get some clarifying information.
Okay, I have a motion for table. Do I have a second?
I would agree. I second.
Okay, we will go ahead and table this. It's more information.
Would, would you like to, I, I'd like some clarification if I could on, on what more information you would like? So the, make sure the address, the address of the, the property, but the, I thought, the, the agreement I thought was fair, it was, was specific enough, but I can make sure that's added. But is there, do you want me to look into a different prop, a different ODOT property to see about?
Maybe I'll just double check to make sure we, we're not missing any murals or any conflict of this.
I, I don't recall having one of those on the first evidence side, but when I go home, I find out. I don't want to get tied into that one and one on Main Street. I don't think that's a good thing.
So clarify, make sure that this, that it's only covering just the one at the entrance into town.
I'd, I'd be okay to set this back for.
And maybe just do a quick run through town, make sure we haven't missed any other mural. Because there's a lot, actually quite a few in town.
Yeah, there are.
Even the ones not painted over.
Well, also, I think that the obligation to keep their building clean or whatever, weed-free as, as Counselor Coleman. I know, I, I recognize it's a private building and they get to do what they want to, but on the other hand, we're going to pay for beautifying it with all the dirty weeds. So I think we need to be, they have a little obligation too.
You would want a commitment from them to maintain the landscaping.
Yeah, why not?
Underneath the mural. We can, if we can get them to, that'd be great. On the, on the note, on the other, the, the agreement specifically says that the Sweet Home Maintenance Station has a mural painted on the side of the building facing Oregon Route 20, OR 20.
That's across from Pleasant Valley.
Yeah.
Yes, that's the one, that's the one that's, that has the mural that we're, that the agreement is in. So it's not about any other facility.
Augers Tree and the grassy area.
No, 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 that, yeah, it, I've never, yeah, the, the grassy area is, is at the corner of 228 and Highway 20. And that, that, by the logger statue, that's a separate site from the mural. So the old, that location had preview, had other works of art in the previous versions, but now all that remains is a grassy strip. And so there's no artwork on that site. The, the other part of the agreement is just the maintenance facility that faces Highway 20. So I don't know of another, it is two spots.
So grass the area at that junction and then the mural on First.
Right, it's those, those two locations are what, are what are covered in the agreement. So there's just the one mural and a grassy strip. And I don't know of any other mural that would be present. So I, when it comes to the clarification, the location, I, I think the agreement is specific on where, what is covered.
Well, then I'm too tired to be here right now.
So there's, right now on the corner of Highway 20, 228 and Highway 20, there's, there is an area that we already take care of to some degree and, and help with the, the museum is involved. You know, so I haven't personally witnessed Public Works taking care of the property. My understanding is that that's what we do.
The museum mows that whole strip. We, we rarely get involved. We were maintaining the sign and then we've done some stuff with the artwork, but we do not maintain or edge that lawn. There is somebody that takes care of that.
It's essentially the museum. And, and we, I believe the museum gets, gets a break on, on water for irrigation.
Yeah, I'm not, I can't answer that.
Utility billing thing, I'm sure. So the, essentially, this is committing the city to make sure that that continues to happen. Right now, it seems to be in, in the museum's interest to, to do that. So they take care of that, that site. If the museum failed to do so, we would be, under this agreement, obligated to make sure that that grassy strip gets mowed and taken care of. Does that answer the? Is everything clear as much now?
We don't, we don't take care of the lumber guys there on that.
No, we do not. And we don't.
And somebody else, they take care of that.
Right, and that's, yes, and so this is not in that, nothing to do with this agreement anymore.
Mr. Mayor, before we call a vote, I just want to clarify. It is, the address is on here. So thank you, Blair, sorry for saying that. It's right there. It's really small and I see it now, so, yeah. And I do like the painting on the wall. I, I'm wondering about the content of the painting, how, I, I love it, but I'm wondering. And keep it there, so, yeah.
Okay, so is there anything else you would like me to investigate before it comes back to you?
Anything else that counts, you can look into. That'll do it. We'll go and table it still.
Okay.
Our new business, RCA Resolution Number 24 for 2022, Resolution Authorizing Transfer Appropriations for 2022.
Good evening, Mayor, member of the council, members of the council. I apologize, I can't be with you tonight, but I've got lots on the agenda for, that, that has my stamp on it. So I wanted to make sure that, that you got to hear from me if you had any questions. Before you is a resolution, Resolution Number 24, authorizing a transfer of appropriations for your consideration. This is a typical year-end resolution that you have seen before. I'll pop through some of the items within the resolution. And if you have any questions, I'd certainly be happy to answer them. The first adjustment that we are requesting is to move $20,000 from the contingency line in the general fund up to the economic development line within the Community and Economic Development Department. The purpose for this is to cover some economic development expenditures that arose during the year that were not planned initially. And staff has placed them initially in the general fund based on the type of expenditures, thinking that that was the best use of those funds instead of taking away from the commercial exterior improvement program. And so that's what we're requesting the 20,000 there for. And then the next adjustment covers a change in benefits for personnel within the Internal Service Fund. What was initially budgeted in that line was $300. And because of some benefit changes before the budget or after the budget was situated for the year, we need $16,500 to cover the cost of the benefits that an employee has, has chosen to take for the year. So again, we are asking to move that $16,500 from the contingency line in that fund. No increase in specific appropriations. Moving on to the Executive Department within the Internal Service Fund, there have been some personnel changes, specifically what this adjustment hopes to cover is the cost of the Pro Tem City Manager and also the ARPA premium for your former city manager that council authorized in August of 2021. Again, we are asking for this from contingency, so no increase in specific appropriations. Lastly, in the Internal Service Fund, moving on to Public Works, this is a request to cover the cost of the ARPA premium to ensure that this budget line does not get overdrawn. This request is to finish off what's left in the contingency if you approve the other items and would, would add $5,235 to the staff pay line for Public Works in the Internal Service Fund. In the wastewater fund, when the budget was set, we, I missed a debt service item, one of our, one of our loans, in, in setting up that budget. So this request specifically reduces the contingency line first, $60,633, and then asks to reduce the amount that we would transfer out from the wastewater fund, which would go toward the project and instead use it to cover the debt service that is necessary for the year. I can say that the 2023 fiscal year does have all of the debt service items covered, so we won't have to worry about this specific adjustment next year. Lastly, for the transfer resolution, in the Street Improvement Fund, we budgeted specific funds for the sidewalk along Main Street between 55th and 60th Avenues. That project, as you're aware, came in higher than we'd anticipated. This adjustment seeks to add 50,000 to the initial budget of $250,500 to cover the costs of the unanticipated increases in that project. In order to make this one work, we had to adjust the appropriations in the State Gas Tax Fund. And so you'll see in the RCA, there are four lines for this one. What we are doing here is reducing the staff pay line by 50,000, moving that expenditure to a transfer out and then transferring those funds over to the Street Improvement Fund where we've been paying for the sidewalk project, in which case you have two lines there, the budget of the expenditure authority, the 50,000, and a corresponding decrease of 50,000, but that's budgeted in a transfer in line so that all of it nets to zero.
Any questions, counsel? Okay, any counsel directive?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 24 for 2022.
I second it.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Trask? Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Direct show of five eyes, no nays, two absent approval of Resolution Number 24 for 2022. Thanks, Brandon. Okay, this time, we're going to, 10 after 7, we'll open up a public hearing for Resolution Number 25 for 2022, Resolution Adopting a Supplemental Budget. At this time, going to ask if there's any bias, conflict of interest or expartee of the council.
No.
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 Okay, at this time, we'll turn over staff report.
The public hearing for a supplemental budget is required when the need to add expenditure authority in a given fund exceeds 10% of that fund's initial expenditure appropriations. And that can take place at any point during the year. The purpose of this public hearing is to address increases needed in both the PATH program, $500,000, as well as, sorry, oh, additional funds to cover grant revenue that has been received for the Lynn Shuttle program. And then finally, additional revenue received in the Economic Development Fund for the purpose of small business grants. And so in order to comply with local budget law, this public hearing is necessary.
Okay, thanks, Brandon. This time.
Right, Mr. Mayor, that the, the resolution in your packet on page 49 encompasses all of the changes that are proposed under this supplemental budget.
Little noted. At this time, open the floor up for any public comment. Okay, then close the public hearing at 7:12. Any further discussion, counsel?
So I just have a question. So Brendan, it's going to cost $500,000 for that crosswalk at 22nd?
Yes, that's the money that was given to the city by Representatives, Representative Kate and Senator Gerard from their American Rescue Plan Act allocations. So from the state legislature. That money then is going to be transferred to ODOT to complete that project. And then anything above that is, is ODOT's responsibility.
Anything above it is our responsibility?
Uh, no, is, is, is ODOT's responsibility.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, that $500,000 was negotiated to have a significant reduction of what they originally thought. So I think that's a giant savings.
Yeah, definitely.
Mr. Mayor, if I might. I just, I, City Manager Worcester did highlight that there are other items within the supplemental budget. So I do just want to cover those real quick so that you're aware of those, these additional items that were not discussed as part of the staff report are items that don't exceed the 10% threshold. So they were not part of the public meeting notice, but are part of the resolution so that it was all combined into one. So specifically, we're discussing here adding some additional expenditure authority in the non-departmental Internal Service Fund as far as revenue is concerned, to accommodate, or to account for COVID-19 premium contributions that the council approved in August. So we're, we're talking about adding revenue of $27,473 and then spreading that out amongst the Executive Department and Public Works. Additionally, in the Internal Service Fund, additional costs of premiums for employees. So we're adding, oh, yeah. These premiums are items that are either negotiated in contracts or were given to, to employees. And so specifically in Public Works, we're asking to increase the revenue line for administrative transfers from each of the Public Works areas, the other funding sources, and then budget an expenditure equal to that to accommodate what has happened in that, in those lines so far to date. And then finally, there, the city has received an extra $30,000 in franchise fees that we are seeking to budget in the Finance Department to cover the cost of legal and consulting fees. The other items contained, as far as the adjustments, are ones that we've discussed previously. So unless there's any questions, I'll leave those to you.
Any questions, counsel, Garnett? No questions at this time. Counsel directive.
Are we still in public hearing?
No, we're not in public hearing.
So, Mr. Mayor, to adopt Resolution 25 for 2022.
I'll second that.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counsel Sanchez?
Yes.
Counsel Coleman?
Yes.
Counsel Trask? President Pro Tem Gerson?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes. Let the direct show of five eyes, no nays, two absent approval of Resolution Number 25 for 2022. This time, I'm going to be opening up another public hearing at 7:13, excuse me, at 7:16. And in regards to use of state revenue sharing fund in this resolution. Resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. At this time, we'll ask counsel if they have any counsel bias, conflict of interest, or any ex parte communications.
No.
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 This time, I will turn it over for staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is one of multiple items that we have to discuss in order to adopt next, the 2023 budget before use a resolution to declare the city's election to receive state revenues. The state revenue sharing is something that has happened for many years. I couldn't tell you honestly how long, but the city has budgeted those revenue sharing funds in the general fund and they're used for general fund purposes, specifically to cover the costs in community and economic development, the municipal court, and our park system. These funds come in in multiple fashions. There is some just general state revenue sharing and then we see revenue from cigarette taxes, liquor taxes. And I believe that is it, actually.
Okay, thank you, Brandon. At this time, I'll open the floor open for the public for any comment. Hey, I will now, at this time, close the public hearing. Further discussion of counsel. Okay, counsel directive.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 21 for 2022.
Second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes. Yes.
President Protem Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Director of Show of Five Eyes, No Nays, Two Absent Approval of Resolution Number 21 for 2022. This time, RCA for Resolution Number 22 for 2022. Resolution certifying the city provides four or more services nor receives state revenues.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am back again, this time with resolution number 22. In order to receive the state revenue sharing that you just passed, an intent to do so, we have to certify that we provide four or more services laid out in ORS 221760. So specifically, the services that the city is certifying that it offers is police protection, street construction, maintenance and lighting, sanitary sewer, storm sewers, planning, zoning, and subdivision control, and one or more utility services. With adoption of this resolution, that will cement our ability to receive state revenues for the 2023 fiscal year.
Questions of counsel? Counsel directive.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 22 for 2022.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
President Protem Gerson?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes. Let the Director of Show of Five Eyes, No Nays, Two Absent Approval of Resolution Number 22 for 2022. This time RCA for Resolution Number 23 for 2022. Resolutions certifying the city complies with sections of ORS 475B related to marijuana sales inside city limits.
This is the second year that the state has required us to complete this certification in order to receive state marijuana funds. Specifically, the city has to state that it does allow for licenses to produce and process marijuana inside city limits and a license for the wholesale sale of marijuana and for retail sale as well. And then also requires us to indicate what our tax is on those retail sales. Adoption of this resolution ensures that we receive marijuana revenues for the 2023 fiscal year, which are currently budgeted in the general fund to provide general operations within the fund.
Any questions to counsel? Okay, counsel directive.
I'll second it.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
President Protem Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Trask? Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Show of Five Eyes, No Nays, Two Absent Approval of Resolution Number 23 for 2022. This time at 7:24, I'm going to open a public hearing for Resolution Number 18 for 2022. Adoption adopting a budget of 2022, 2023, making appropriations and levying taxes. At this time, I'm going to be asking for any declaration of the council members of council bias, conflict of interest, or any ex parte communications.
No.
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 This time, we'll turn over for staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We visited this during the first meeting in June, on June 14, and a discussion with the city council yielded that we'd like to make some additional changes that required a second public hearing. And so this is, we're here for that purpose. Before the council's resolution number 18 for 2022, with total appropriations for the 2023 fiscal year of $32,630,259. This information was published in an amended LB1 document that was posted in a local newspaper last week. Specifically, what was added and amended for this purpose was $500,000 to send the ARPA funds, as we previously discussed, to the state of Oregon. And then, secondly, we added $75,000 for the Police Department. Along with that $75,000, part of our budgeting process is that anything added to either the general fund, the Police Department, anything with a contingency line receives a 3% increase in its contingency for all expenditures budgeted within the fund. And so above the $75,000 for the Police Department, an additional 2250 was added to the contingency line for the purpose of contingency in the next fiscal year. So those are the changes that were made to the budget. And this gives the community an opportunity to provide comment one more time before consideration of adoption.
This time, we'll open up the fourth comment. Public hearing at 7:26. This time, discussion of counsel.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one question that really doesn't have to do with the budget itself, except do we happen to know when that crossing might be beginning? At 22nd and May?
ODOT has some work that they need to do on their end to make sure that the the STIP, the State Transportation Infrastructure Plan, is updated to account for this and to add it to the project that is ongoing. And so they are at work doing that. Once that is completed, they will get an amended AGA back to us for this work, at which point it can begin. The contractor that they have working on the ramps is is engaged in that activity up till next April. And so we expect that it could be up to that point where we see construction. That's the best information they've been able to give me.
Thank you.
Well, we started Shea Point sidewalks in 2012, so.
Shish. No, sorry, Mr. Mayor. This has to get done. I just, this, we are not accepting anything else.
Make your hopes up too high real quick here. Any other discussion of counsel? Any counsel directive?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve changes to the approved budget and adopt resolution number 18 for 2022, adopting a budget for 2022, 2023, making appropriations and levying taxes.
I'll second it.
I'm going to motion second by roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
President Protem Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Trask? Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Show of Five Eyes, No Nays, Two Absent Approval of Resolution Number 18 for 2022. This time RCA, Resolution Number 26 for 2022. Resolution establishes salary schedules for non-represented employees.
I think this is my last resolution before you all. But what is before you is a change to the salary schedule for non-represented employees. If you remember during the budget process, part of what we discussed during our budget meetings was that the, we, the city had proposed a 3% increase for non-represented employees. During those meetings, members of the council indicated that they wish to see that actually be 3.25%. So that's what we are presenting here for you. Certainly just reminding that the budget is 3%, so we may have to make adjustments in the next year if other expenditures do not come in lower in some places. And what I've provided in your packet for you is not only the kind of final version, but also you can see kind of the track changes version. So you can see, you know, where the salaries were and where they are going to with that 3.25% COLA effective July 1. Sorry, the only other thing that I will highlight is specifically the city manager line. There used to be kind of more of an established salary schedule there, steps A through E, I think. Yep, A through E. What we've done in this case, because we don't know exactly, you know, where that city manager is going to land, is place in the salary range that the council had discussed and authorized for the search, for the city manager's search. And so that's the figure that you'll see in the city manager line at this time and doesn't have anything in between until that contract is established.
Any questions to counsel? Counsel directive.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 26 for 2022.
Motion on the table. There's a motion to second by roll call, please.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Trask? President Protem Gerson?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes. Director of Show of Five Eyes, No Nays, Two Absent Approval of Resolution Number 26 for 2022. Next up was a resolution of number 20 for 2022. Some of the information didn't make the packet, so at this time, we're going to postpone that to the next meeting on July 12. Moving down now to RCA Rural Development Initiative Leadership Program.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report begins on page 121 of your packet. Earlier this spring, President Protem and I met with representatives from rural development initiatives about the leadership program that we've been offering here in Sweet Home to our youth. And our youth advisory council member, T. Herrera, was a member of that in the past. RDI is not going to be offering that program this next year in Sweet Home. And so they put together some options for us to consider of programs that we could offer in the area of worship in our community. The first, the first being represented on page 125 of your packet. So the first year, the RDI representatives would be facilitating a sustainable program for us to move forward into future years. They'd be looking for community partners, and there would also be some training incorporated into this first year of the program. You'll see a bar graph on page 124 of your packet that kind of shows what that sustained rural leadership program would look like for calendar year 2023. Then there are two options that they've proposed to us. The first being that we would offer a community cohort the following year, and then a youth cohort switching back and forth, those leadership programs. The proposal at the bottom of page 125 would be to begin with the community development phase and then combine both the youth leadership program with the adults and so that we could start to build sustainable relationships in our community. This would be modeled similar to the Ford Family Foundation program. And it's very valuable to the community for collaboration and leadership building. One of the things that I have observed here in my time as say manager Protem is that there is a lot of relationship building that's going to need to take place in the coming year. We have a new fire chief in the community. We may have a new school superintendent. We will have a new city manager. We will have a new, or we do have a new fire chief. We have a relatively new representative at the chamber. This is a council election year, so there's going to be some change potentially in the council leadership. We do have two newer counselors that serve on our council already that may also benefit from this program. And so tonight, I am recommending to you option two, which is in your packet. And I lost my page here. Excuse me, option three, which is to make a motion to approve the allocation of $20,000 in support of the Sweet Home Combined Community Leadership Program for this next year. And with that, I will take any questions that you may have.
Any questions to counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I had a few questions, and I appreciated Kristi's time earlier today. So I'm probably going to just review some of the questions I asked her. But one of the questions I didn't ask earlier was how many people benefited from the program this last year?
I think that we did say that in the staff report that there were 13 Sweet Home students that they gained valuable skills in the previous year.
And this next, this proposal mentions the next year is just the development of a program, and then it would be focusing on adults. So it wouldn't focus necessarily on the or you're promoting the combined one?
The option that I'm proposing is option three in your packet, and that would be the combined leadership program. So the first year, RDI would be reaching out to community stakeholders, including youth, other community leaders, and trying to get some sustainable buy-in for the program. That would be followed by training in the fall, as outlined on page 124 in that bar graph at the top. And then in future years, with hope that there is that buy-in from our community leaders. And that could be nonprofits, it could be private sector leaders as well, bringing everyone together so that we can have a sustainable program for the future.
I believe we need to support our youth, and I think it'd be a golden opportunity, not only support our youth, but also to combine that with mentors of our community at the same time. I think it's a good, a very good thing.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I think that combined, combining the adults with the youth is a very good idea because the mentoring that could develop that way, that I think our youth need. I don't know if our youth wants to say anything about this, but but I think that that would be, that's a great idea for me.
Mr. Mayor, Christine Gilmore from RDI is online, and she may have a few comments that she would like to add to the conversation.
Hi, Christine, go ahead. You have any comments you want to add?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you so much for putting this on your agenda. Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. When I'm, you know, the embodied voice over here, disembodied voice over here, you never quite know. The thing I would add is just again uplift you as a city and your focus on the youth. When we put together this proposal, we had the same thought and the same idea of bringing the existing leaders, the mentors, the people in the community with the students, and really seeing a future of connectivity and sustainability for this program. So, and I'm happy to answer any specific questions as well.
Any further questions to counsel?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, how does this program tie into already existing youth leadership training clubs or groups that are existing at the high school or at the junior high? YAC?
Well, I the, none of the YAC members are in the leadership classes. So it's developing their skills that the school doesn't offer, or at least they're not involved in.
So the YAC is connected with already, this RDI program?
Yes.
That's what I was asking.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
With already existing groups that are here within the community. I was a little bit sticker shock when I saw the price tag. I remember the students that came to the city council meeting and the impact that this program had on them and how much good it has done for them. So I was concerned about the cost, but at the same time, I know how important the youth are. So I was a little bit torn because I want to continue to invest in our youth, so.
Something I might add, Mr. Mayor, is that while the city would be contributing the $20,000 to the program to launch it in the first year, that wouldn't prohibit us from asking our community partners if they would be willing to contribute as well. Before the superintendent took a leave from the school district, I did reach out to her to see if the school district would be interested in partnering with, on this proposal. And I think that that's something we could continue to work on. And this would obligate the city if we aren't able to find community partners to also participate. But that doesn't prohibit us from seeking out additional assistance to launch that first year. This would just give RDI the security that they need to begin their work and begin planning the program.
That with the school district since they changed which was happening?
No, we haven't, and I think that would be part of the responsibility of RDI is seeking out those sustainable members to participate in the program.
Any questions, counsel?
Combined Community Leadership Program.
I'll second that.
A motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Trask. President Protem Gerson.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes. The five eyes, no nays, two absent approval Rural Development Initiative Leadership Program of twenty thousand dollars. Information only, DEQ Stormwater TMDL Annual Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselors, you have in front of you our annual report to DEQ for our stormwater system. You can see the greatest on some pollutant criterias, temperature, bacteria related to our wastewater plant. We did extremely well this year. You can see in our cover letter that council had a direct hand in some of the success. We did the SDC fee update, also stormwater fee update, and we also purchased a new sweeper to help keep our streets clean. We do this annually. It's based off a five-year plan that we submit and update. And we did well, and this is just for your information. If you have any questions, I can answer those.
Any questions in council? I, I've seen a significant difference in our city streets with the new sweeper, and I have seen them up and down the avenue, so. They're doing a phenomenal job and I just pass off to them.
New sweeper is extremely efficient. The old one, it was like using a vacuum cleaner with a broken bag. It just didn't, wasn't sufficient, so.
Plus, they do the sidewalks.
Yeah.
We need to work on that area. I think there's some ordinances that we need to work within the downtown area, but yeah, I agree.
Surprise because I do in that cold set and it's freezing there. He's able to make that turn. Create the gutter, bar, and go down and all that stuff. It's pretty, a pretty good.
I agree.
Passing on, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Information only, twenty twenty-three legislative priorities for the League of Oregon Cities. You'll see page one thirty-nine.
Before you tonight is an informational only report to talk about the upcoming legislative priorities for the League of Oregon Cities. As you know, the city of Sweet Home is a member of the League of Oregon Cities, which. Performs lobbying activities on behalf of cities throughout the state of Oregon. Each year they convene various committees that address. Potential legislative priorities for the following legislative session. So before you, you will see a list comprising what all of the committees put together. That is, begins on page one forty-one of your packet. And the league is changing the process just slightly this year. And they're asking that each city identify a voting delegate within, who would then go into their system and. Record what the priorities of the city are so that those can be taken into account as they. Receive all of the priorities from the various cities, the two hundred and forty-one cities across the state of Oregon. And determine what their five legislative priorities are. So tonight, this is information for you only. There are a number of things that you need to read. To make a decision on what the priorities are and. There are a couple of options that we put together in the packet for you to think about. Number one, do you want to, as a council individually? Mark your priorities, submit them for the record for our next meeting. And then have the city manager or the mayor prepare the ballot and record those with the League of Oregon Cities. Would you like the Pro Tem to coordinate with our city's leadership team to also provide input on those and. Combine all of the scores together along with yours or just separately? And. Finally, do nothing. So. This is just for your information tonight, but I would be looking for feedback on your preferences for how you'd like to determine what your legislative priorities are going to be. There are quite a few of them. And the League of Oregon Cities has prepared a description of each of those proposed legislative priorities and. We can only pick a few of them.
We've done this once before. And I believe it's a good thing, so. I, I liked the idea of combined. What's the council members feel?
I like the idea of the combined.
Okay, well, we can set up a process where we will have you cast your ballots. Those will be made part of the record. For our next meeting where we would adopt the priorities and we would take into consider, consideration. The recommendations from the management team as well. We'll bring that back to you at your next meeting in July.
Next up RCA Authorization Fill a Vacant Position.
Yes, the Public Works Department has been holding a municipal maintenance worker position open for quite some time. And we are requesting that that position now be filled. We are moving into the summer months. We're. Ready to get started with all of our street work and we're asking for your approval to authorize the hiring and filling of this vacancy.
Any questions, counsel? Council directive.
So moved as recommended.
I'll second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
President Protem Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Trask. Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Director show we have five eyes, no nays, two absent approval of the authorization of the vac, filling the vacant position. Next up RCA Personal Policies Update.
Yes, before you, on page one fifty-six of your packet is an RCA requesting an amendment to our personnel policies. The proposed amendment has been reviewed by our city attorney. And it is highlighted on page one fifty-six of your packet in red. So from time to time, city staff will receive tickets to benefit their, for attendance at various community events. We have several coming up this summer. Our Community and Economic Development Director Blair Larson reached out to the Ethics Division to. Seek some guidance on whether it was acceptable for city employees and council to receive those tickets to attend various community events. And it is, but what they suggested is that we implement a policy outlining what we approve. And so with the consent of the city attorney, we've placed that in the employee handbook. And that would be considered a form of additional compensation for the attendance at these events. And so we are seeking approval of the amendment, which is option two, and the motion is outlined on page one fifty-seven of your packet.
Any questions, counsel?
That's on, that's on gifts already. So that doesn't have to do.
Just to, to clarify. That, that's for, for gifts to an individual. The ethics, the Government Ethics Commission, the, the rules that are, that exist in state law focus on. On gifts and things like this that would be given to an individual. When the city gets a block of. Of tickets to an event, that's a community event, it's not given to an individual. And it's, it's simply up to. Right, so it doesn't fall into the same category.
There's just keeping everybody out of trouble.
Any other questions? And you, council director.
Mr. Mayor, so moved as recommended.
June second, a roll call, please.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Trask. President Protem Gerson.
Yes.
Counsel, or Mayor Mahler.
Yes. The director show of five eyes, no nays, approve, and, and two absent approval of the personal policy updates. Now we have no ordinance bills and at this time reports to committees.
Mr. Mayor, the YAC is probably be going to Newport in August to meet with their YAC. At the aquarium. And the, the senior center has. Is planning a trip to the coast on that day, so we're going to piggyback on their bus, so we don't, so we have transportation for the students.
Mr. Mayor, I have an update from a committee that I don't serve on, just because I was at the safety fair the other day. And I saw this flyer that outlines all of the parks in the city of Sweet Home and the amenities each of them has, and I thought it was really cool. I brought it to the attention of the people at the table and they were excited about it because it had just been printed. So, yeah, that's a cool resource for us. It's well done, so I wanted to bring that to your attention, but also. We don't know if this falls under a particular committee, although the. Admin and Finance and Property Committee had met regarding Radiator Supply House, and then a motion was passed where they were given some funds for the event that's happening this weekend. One of the questions that was asked in those, that committee and during city council meetings was how was Radiator Supply going to advertise for the city of Sweet Home? And something was posted recently by a nationally known individual, and I just thought the city could benefit from hearing. How Radiator Supply House is advertising for the city of Sweet Home, so. Yeah. Did you bleep out the language?
That's good.
I appreciated that he included us as a full partner in the event.
Any other committee reports?
I have some business owners at home. And I think from my standpoint, we had a very, very good meeting. People that were doing their. Your mind. And, and it was very, very good. There was some good stuff that came out of that meeting. It's not. We had a little bump a while back, but it seemed like it was really, really positive. And if you haven't noticed, there's going to be a Taco Bell loan, everybody's safe, one of these days. And, and they were, they were positive about what they can not predict, but the other folks that had the motor place especially. They had some things that they wanted to try. Help us out, so anyway, it was very, very good.
Again, any other, any reports? Moving on, reports to city officials. The mayor report. My hat's off to Lujia. You did a good job. That's a very good job. Also, I want to compliment the police department and the safety fair. You guys did a phenomenal job. City manager.
Uh, yes, I just want to let you know that our Community and Economic Development Department will be hosting a, a city table at the Icebox Cook-Off and. We understand there's going to be some pretty prestigious people there that Blair will be connecting with. As part of his efforts in community and economic development. I want to commend him for doing that outreach. The beautiful brochures that you see will be part of that table that will be showcased at the event and. So city staff will be present on and off throughout the event and really look forward to having that. Event in our community. The individual that you saw was an individual named Shag. And if you follow. Him, there are, he has several nationwide followers and so he really is promoting Sweet Home and. This will bring a lot of attention to our city moving forward, so looking forward to that. I also want to commend our Public Works Department for the work that they've been doing on the wastewater treatment facility and the design. All of the effort that they're putting into that. This week, we received the ninety percent deliverable for the phase one design and staff is reviewing that, and I'd really like to commend. The work of Greg Springman, Stephen Haney, Trish Rice, Brandon Nish, and as well as our contract engineer Preston. Who have been, and his team who have been diligently working to get the design underway so that we can. Get the project started in this next fiscal year. So thank you for your work, Greg, and to your team as well. For those of you that are serving on the admin and finance committee, we do have a meeting scheduled on Thursday, this Thursday, June thirtieth at eleven AM. We have three items that you'll be reviewing, so just want to make sure that, to remind you of that meeting later this week. We have also Julie put together an update to the recruitment schedule, which is on page one hundred and sixty of your packet. So we will be meeting with our consultant on July sixth to review the candidates. In executive session for your city manager moving forward. That schedule also includes first round of interviews, July twenty-second. The second round of interviews, August tenth, followed by an executive session on August eleventh to receive feedback. From the community at the meet and greet and make a final selection in your candidate. Wanted to make sure that you are all aware of that and have that on your schedule. I did meet with Sweet Home Sanitation late last week. And they have announced that they will be implementing a four point nine four percent CPI. In their rates beginning July first. That is in accordance with the franchise agreement that we currently have in place with them. They are able to implement the CPIs based on the agreement automatically without input or approval from the council. But I did want to bring that to your attention because you will see some increases in rates in your next billing. And those rates, I believe, are included.
They're on there.
They're, they're, they're in your packet. Let's see. Movies in the Park, last Friday, we had our first movie in the park. It was extremely well attended, over a hundred attendees is the estimate. Which is just fantastic. I want to say thank you to Blair and his team, especially Angela Clay. For all of her work in pulling that off and for all other staff that participated in the event. It was just. Amazing to see that everybody loves that so much, and I think that that's really a worthy investment in bringing our community together.
amazing to see that everybody loves that so much, and I think that that's really a worthy investment in bringing our community together. One of the things that we had included on the agenda for tonight was a the award of a contract for the Ninth Avenue Waterline Project. And this is one of the projects, a small diameter water main that the council had previously approved to be funded with ARPA dollars. The federal treasury has not issued guidance on whether the Buy America Act that went into place in May applies to these ARPA projects. From my understanding, Treasury was getting ready to issue an opinion and include that in their guidance documents when the Office of Management and Budget said, wait, wait, wait. The Buy America Act goes into effect in May, and the only time that it would not apply would be if the if there is an emergency contract. So we pulled that from consideration tonight. We are going to be doing some additional research, reaching out to our senators to see if they can provide some input for us. If you're able to do that, Counselor Coleman, I know that you are serving as our legislative committee representative. If that's something you can also assist with or any other counselors, we would appreciate it. What we don't know, what we didn't want to have happen is get get the project going, get the the piping ordered, and then find out that the Buy America Act applies. And then we have all of this piping that we need to pay the contract for contractor for. So there's still more work to be do done on our end of things. Just a little bit hesitant to commit ourselves to a project and get the contractor going when we really don't know if the Buy America Act applies to this contract. So you will see that again on your next agenda for discussion and an update. Hopefully, approval of the contract, and we hope to have that information forthcoming. When I reached out to the League of Oregon Cities, they actually called the National League of Oregon Cities for input because no other cities had brought it up. But certainly, it is a concern, and we want to ensure that we are doing our due diligence when we're awarding these contracts and what provisions of the federal law would apply.
Got a quick question for Greg. In regards to that, is the is the domestic pricing is still cheaper than the import right now?
You know, I don't know. I think it's all over the place. The problem is if you can get it. I mean, right now, we're here in twenty-eight weeks for certain water parts. We're trying to scavenge just to stay ahead of this ODOT project, moving meters, fire hydrants, and worse, we're using a lot of our stuff that we had stored. So that's a difficult part of it. It's not just who can get it. And so the prices are all over the place when you it's supply and demand. I know we've had issues getting plastic pipe and stuff like that. And so I think this is one of those things where everybody's just going to get their products wherever they can get them. And so I think we want to be sure that we've hit the criteria here so we don't have to, you know, have to come back and either pay more money or change orders or worse, have have an organization come back and and audit us. So hopefully, we get this resolved sooner or later. It doesn't make projects any easier having these hurdles. All this, how this money's tied to other things makes it extremely difficult, let alone just trying to get the supply chains going. So we'll do our best, I'm sure.
And then the final thing that I have is a notification of some training, excuse me, training by the League of Oregon Cities that will be happening in our area in December in Albany. It is the annual Elected Essentials Workshops that are sponsored and hosted by the League of Oregon Cities. And on December fifth, the OMA New Mayors Workshop will be held in the evening in Albany. December sixth, Elected Essentials Training will be held. I just want to put that on your radar. It is excellent training. The the League of Oregon Cities every other year changes up their their training. This year, it will be Elected Essentials, which is really the in-depth training. And then on the short session years, they do fundamentals training, which is kind of like a modified shorter version of the Elected Essentials Training. So we'll bring this back to you later, but did want to make sure that you're aware of it in case you're setting your schedule for December now, which I'm sure probably a lot of you are. Also, in front of you is information on the League of Oregon Cities Annual Conference, which will be held October fifth through seven at the River House in Bend. If there are any counselors that are wishing to attend that, please let us know as well. And that concludes my report unless there are any questions.
No, that train is pretty good. So I recommend counselors to take in that. I want to back up real quick, a couple of points on the mayor's report I forgot to bring up. And you have besides the public safety, the safety fair, we got a lot of positivity out of that, but the tune up Tuesday, I'm getting a lot of positive feedback on that. And the sweet rides this past weekend was, I don't know, we set a record about how many cars showed up, but that was quite a turnout. You know, so I had some positivity come from that, too. So I just want to share that. Moving on to directors' reports. Anything for the directors? Good for the toll bill. Anyway, any questions to directors?
Mr. Mayor, no questions, but I just want to do a shout out to Chief Lynn and his team for working with the schools after the mass casualties that we've had that you were proactive in reaching out to the schools to discuss those issues with them. So thank you.
Noting it right now. Should I call for a vote of confidence?
So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask Greg and Jeff, how's the homeless shelter coming?
It's moving along. Well, we maybe Blair can chime in on this. We've been sitting on those meetings. The road base is done, the water line is in, the conduit in the the for electrical, the vault has been put in for the electrical. Is scheduled with PAC Power to come and finish the electrical. We are working currently on the hot tap for that what for the service for that site. Once that's done, then we're going to seal everything off. We're going to chemically treat that pipe, store it for twenty-four hour period, run some tests, and then we'll flush it. At that point, then it could be put in service. That'll probably take about a week. What I'm hearing is sooner than later that the annex will be relocated. We've already cleaned all the awnings and steps and everything off that. And so they have a placement for that, and I would imagine that's probably going to take place within a couple of weeks. I haven't heard anything. They're taking it apart yet. Other than that, we will probably be finishing up the sewer line next week for that site, and then it's kind of up to FAC, the county for the road. But right now, they're not waiting on the city. They're not waiting at us at all. We're waiting on FAC to kind of catch up to us. So we're in a good spot.
Thank you. That's good news.
Thank you. And direct report comments or?
Mr. Mayor, I should also thank Brandon Nish for his leadership in the preparation of the budget this year, and especially appreciate him joining us virtually while he's on his vacation. I don't know what I was thinking approving it, but he was able to participate virtually and just want to thank him for his work on the budget this year.
Any other department reports, comments, or? City Attorney.
Your report.
I can also business good.